Okay, and I believe, Ms. Burbine, when you are ready, you go right ahead.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Situate Planning Board, Thursday, December 10th, 2020. If anyone wants to participate virtually, which we have to do at this point in time, go to the website of Planning Board and follow the directions. And if you have questions during the TNA, question and answer, Q and A, excuse me, raise your hand and we will call on you. So I will entertain a motion to accept the agenda.
So moved.
Ms. Burbine?
Yes.
Ms. Lampert?
Yes.
Mr. Bornstein?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Pritchard?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you all unanimous in favor.
Thank you. All right, our first item, our first order of business is the continued public hearing, site planer's use and special permit for gas backwards building and one additional commercial space in the Village Center and the Neighborhood District, Green Bush Driftway, Gateway District, New Driftway Transit Village, Sub District, VCN GDGNDTV-4852 New Driftway. And one thing I will say at the outset, according to our general bylaws, it just for your, all of your education, we do not allow self-serve gas stations. That will be part of the conditions going forward. One attendant is needed for every four dispensing hoses. And since there are eight, therefore, you'll need two attendants to pump gas. And that said, we have comments from DPW and their questions are as follows. This came in December 8th. Will the existing turning lane on New Driftway be extended between the existing light at Old Driftway and 28 New Driftway? The proposed wall along the south westerly side of the property averages five feet to six feet in height. Will there be fencing along the top of the wall? You'd need a permit for that because it's above so many feet. The restaurant is proposed to be located on the westerly side of the building and the grease tank is proposed on the easterly. Considerations should be made to relocate the grease trap in closer proximity to the kitchen floors, understanding routine maintenance requirements. A hydrant is located at the entrance to the site. Will any hydrants be located within the site? Prior to construction, confirmation with the sewer water, Situate Water Department shall be made prior to making connections to the existing six-inch water main. Alternatives may be available to connect to a newer and larger supply line in New Driftway. All new or repaired curb ramps located on and off-site shall meet ADA requirements. The ballards at the building spaces should be located to prevent a vehicle from entering the building. All utility trench connections located in New Driftway shall be backfilled with controlled density fill. And we have a comment letter from Butter from 60 New Driftway. I want to send you a note regarding the gas station ahead of the planning board meeting tonight. While I understand why the town would prefer the pumps be located behind the building for the look, but I feel that will cause more problem. One, lighting and noise is the major concern. I think most owners would prefer the bumps be located, the pumps be located out front so the noise and lighting would be blocked by the building. Two, traffic will be an issue. Exiting from our driveway, and this is the riverway. If you are trying to take a left, it's currently an issue as people stopped at the traffic light heading toward the rotary block the drive exit sometimes. You have to sit through two or three lights before you can take a left. Also, pre-COVID, in the morning rush to get to the train, the left-hand turn lane typically is backed up outside the length of the lane, which I believe is where the planned entrance is. If we turn this lane into a turn either way lane, it will cause problems when traffic patterns return to normal. Three, with rear pumps needing to circle around to exit, I can see people with boats fueling up, causing issues trying to loop around and exit. I think the only way to address this is to have one-way flow in and out of the station, and this will be and this would be able, if pumps were in the front, or the exit could go through the medical building lot. In the end, I'm all for supporting businesses, but I think the size of the slot is just too small for our rear-facing gas station. John Morrissey, 60 New Driftway, Unit 19. Okay. Now, I will turn this over to the applicant to see what updates and changes you have made since last we spoke. Mr. Cutler?
Good evening. This is Walter Sullivan, the attorney for the and I have Mr. Cutler with me, also the project engineer, Hal Chuba, and also Kathleen Keen on traffic. Before we get started, Madam Chair, I heard you say about self-serve and full service. And I'm wondering if you can direct me where that might be in the bylaw. I read it to me and you had to have one attendant for four pumps, but I didn't read it to be that they had to assist in the dispensing of the gasoline.
Karen?
It's in the general bylaws, section 32010. It says, "No gasoline shall be dispensed in or upon the licensed premises by means of self-serving dispensing systems, unless during the hours when open for business, there shall be on duty at all times no fewer than one person, owner, or operator or employee for each four dispensing hoses."
Yeah, so we understood that at our last meeting, and we would have two people at all times, but we didn't understand that they would have to pump the gas. We thought it could be pumped by the consumer.
Well, I guess I'll have to get an interpretation from Town Council.
Okay, thank you.
Karen, just the way you read that, it sounded like that was what it intended. It said unless there was, so I'm just, yeah, I was, it just was what it sounded like. Like it was making an exception if it was, if there were attendees, right?
I mean, I guess I can see what, I guess, I can see what you're saying. I mean, I
I think it's fine. It's asked Town Council. That's just what it sounded like to me when you read it. What section is that?
Section 32010 of the general bylaws.
Of the general bylaws.
Right, and it calls self, it says self-service gasoline stations.
All right, so Mr. Sullivan, we will refer this to Town Council.
That's fine. I appreciate that. Thank you. No, at this point, I think it makes sense, Aaron, to have Hal sort of go through what's been resubmitted.
Absolutely.
Okay, so Hal, make the board through the materials you've submitted.
Right, okay. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. For the record, Hal Chuba, consulting engineer with offices at 112 State Road in Dartmouth. I am the design, the site design engineer for this, for the applicant. Since our last meeting back in October 8th, we did make some changes on the site plans. And I'll go through the changes briefly and then we'll open the floor. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have. But I would like to, to, to now indicate that the applicant did hire a, a landscape architect and we did develop a brand-new landscape design that was submitted with the revised plans. As far as the site plans, I'll go through the, the site layout. The site layout pretty much did not change. As the, what we did, we, we did adjust the parking data to reflect Table 1 requirements of the zoning bylaws. There was some discussions last time at the last meeting whether Table 1 or Table 2 should be used. We did consult also with the, with the building commissioner who did agree that Table 1 is the table to be used for this project. So what we have, we do have 28 total, 28 parking spaces. We have a convenience store, 4,000 square foot convenience store that requires one space per 200 square feet. That's a total of 20 parking spaces. We do have a restaurant with 20 seats and requires one space per four seats. That's five parking spaces. And also, if you recall, at the last meeting, we did include some storage in the basement for space that we added two parking spaces for and one small office for the tenant operator of the convenience store gas station that he would be using, and that would require one parking space. So total of 20 parking spaces are required and a total of 28 parking spaces are provided. The, as I, as I mentioned, the, the layout did not change. The only change on the access driveway is we have reduced the, the width of the concrete rumble strip from 10 feet to six feet as requested by the peer review. There was a minor change on the, and we provided a brand-new landscape design. As far as the grading and the drainage, there was no change to the concept of the drainage. All the drainage, all the runoff from the site would be collected by a closed drainage system, treated and discharged into an onsite infiltration system that would contain all runoff on-site for the 100-year storm. With that, we would be reducing the runoff from the site by 100%. So be this, again, this couple of few minor changes, I would say, or some that was raised at the last review by Mr. Cheshia, and I am in the process of addressing all those comments in, in, in writing, and I will send my responses to Mr. Cheshia before the next meeting. We did relocate the infiltration system in the back. In this, we pushed it in the southerly direction to provide 10-foot minimum separation between the infiltration system and the footings for the canopy and also to provide 10-foot clearance from the retaining wall to the, to the drainage, to the infiltration system. We did change the drainage piping from RCP, from plastic to reinforced concrete as Mr. Cheshia had a concern about the nature of the materials that it's being used because of the gas, gasoline station use. Utility plans, there was a couple of minor changes. We did show two separate water connections for the proposed uses as, as as requested by the water department. So it'll be one-two-inch water service to the convenience store and one-two-inch water service to the, to the restaurant. We also provided a six-inch pipe for fire protection and for a hydrant that would be located along the northwest corner of the building. We looked at the grease trap and that was a comment from DPW to engineering. We thought that the grease trap be located along the east side of the building because the west side of the building, we have two entrances to the store, to the restaurant, and we also have seating areas. And again, it's a preference. I mean, it's easily accessible from the back parking lot and it shouldn't be a problem having it on that side. The utility plan, there was also some concern about the, the lighting plans. We did revise the lighting plans to, to lessen the intensity of the lighting along adjacent properties, and I believe we did cut it down to less than one-foot candle along the property line, and I would like to emphasize that to the east of the prop, of the project is, is a paved parking lot and to the west of the project is also a paved driveway. To the north of the project, there's, we have the 10-foot bike sidewalk for pedestrians. Say, we have couple, we have, I think the intensity over the sidewalk is about two to three foot candles, and I think that would be beneficial for people using that sidewalk at night. So I don't think we had, we're causing any glare or, or nuances to the, to the adjacent properties or, or streets from the lighting. And also, we did just the canopy lighting to, to address some of the comments that were raised last time by the, by the residents along the east side of the, behind the medical building. So we did increase the shielding around the canopy roof by six inches. So now the lights in the canopy are 12 inches from the bottom of the roof line of the canopy so they won't be visible from, from the side to, to the, to the residence. We, we, and I, as I said, we did provide a brand-new landscape plan and that shows the 10% amenities required by zoning bylaws to the back of the building. And at this time, I'll be, I'll be glad to answer any questions, but before we do that, I did take a look at the DPW engineering comments, and I'd like to say that, that we have no issues of addressing those comments prior to the next meeting with the planning board. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Sullivan, is there anything else? Does Mr. Cutler want to make a comment?
I, I don't have anything to add right now to, to Hal's comments. I, you know, we've spoken to a couple neighbors. We've tried to address any concerns they've had. Aside from that, I think we're just working hard to address any concerns that, that the board and the peer reviewers have.
Okay, thank you. All right, is John Chessia with us this evening?
I am.
Okay, comments, John?
Okay, I just had, there's a few things that I guess remain from my, in my opinion anyway, relative to the project. So the first one, under, it's under two different sections, 760.4 and 753.3H3. So in the back, what I've been asking for the last couple of letters at least, maybe all of them, how did they determine the interior landscape plantings in the parking lot? So you, you really can't easily quantify it. So what I asked for, and I don't think it's a big deal to provide, is a plan that shows is the limit exterior of the area that we use to determine what the parking lot is because I would presume the canopy in the middle is part of the parking lot. So that's kind of what I looked at. And then the way the islands are, it's typically the islands that sort of stick into the parking lot. You don't go outside the pavement, perhaps where you have a row of spaces and then a irregularly shaped island because it turns and there's some other spaces. That island may count, but that's, I think, what you need to show because my calculations came up different than what they presented as meeting the interior landscape requirement.
Can I just chime in here as well? John, I agree with you that the park, they, they are saying that the parking area includes the whole canopy, and I agree that it's only the islands that are sticking into the parking that count towards the 5%. And on a very rough pass that I did, I got that you're practically at 5%, but we really need to see those numbers. And to make the 5% with the landscape, we need a tree in that back island.
Okay. Yeah, that will be shown on the next submission. We
Okay.
will show that, yeah.
Okay. The next one is, I believe, 760.7D, and it might be in some of the stormwater stuff. So the front walkway is called a pervious walkway. And if it's a pervious pavement per DEP requirements, the detail would have to comply, even if it's concrete, the section below the concrete has to meet the pervious pavement requirement on the DEP details, and it's only got like a few inches of crushed stone under the concrete, so it wouldn't meet that, that requirement. I mean, I don't think that's a huge, it costs some money, but it's not a huge issue. I think it's just a detail. The this one shows up in a couple of different spots, but the 751.3 was a, 751.3C, limit of work, 770.5G. So, I don't know, Karen, can you share the plan?
Um, no, I can't.
Okay, I, I can if I'm, if, if you don't, I, I have the plans.
Sure, I want to show on the grading sheet. Maybe you can point to some things, some issues that I think need to be looked at. So you gotta let him share, right?
Hey, um, Hal should be set up to share. He is as, in as a co-host, so he should be able to just go down to the bottom, share a screen. There we go. It's coming.
This is the layout. I'll go to the, I think the sheet number five. Okay, so this is the, the grading plan.
Okay, so if you, if you could put, yeah, see where the, your pointer is.
Yeah.
Okay, right around, right, okay, come back to the east a little, where the grading's right around. There's a tree over here and look where the grading is up against it. And the question there is that tree was to remain, not that one. Come back to the north. Not next with that one.
Yeah.
I mean, the, the grading's right around that, and that tree was proposed to remain on the landscape plans. I don't, it says it's an oak tree. It looks like in that area, the grading may need to be tweaked to avoid that tree.
Right, yeah, no, I, I think we're matching the grade there and that, that tree is to remain. It was also noted on the landscape plans and on all the plans, so we'll just, we'll, we'll tweak it. We'll move it in, in the westerly. We'll move probably the, the grading a few feet away from the tree, so we won't touch it.
Can you zoom in at all on the plan to the, and I'm looking more, can it, can your picture get a little more zoomed closer or is that not possible?
How you're gonna push that plus sign right in that bottom right-hand corner? You see that there?
Yes, I can, but right now, let me just, I need to minimize the grid.
All right, now scroll so that you're showing more of the northerly part.
You wanna see the back or the north?
The north. I'll tell you. I'll just, if you just scroll down, I'll say when to stop. Okay, and that's good. Anywhere in there. So you have a 25 contour just off the building and a 24 contour to the south of it with a six-inch curve, correct?
Correct.
So halfway between the 25 and the 24 with a six-inch curve, right at that light would be elevation 25, correct?
We did, we did change that. I think we, that's elevation 20, yeah, that should be, we did change it. It was off by six inches.
So, I mean, I think what you got is you gotta, you gotta have the 25, gotta, gotta close around the building. You got a single line and it it doesn't work that way.
It is, it is, Mr. Cheshia, but if you look at the building, that 25 wraps around the building, but because we did provide spot grades in the front and it's all 20, I, I'll show you, but I guess, we'll, we'll, we'll extend the line. I know what you're saying. We just wrap the line around the building this way and it's gonna stop somewhere here. But if you look, if you look at the grades, oh, I guess, yeah, see the 25 here, the back of the walk or the edge of the walk is all 25. The finished grade is, the, the floor finished grade is 2550 and this is all 25 back here. So it's gonna wrap around here and then it's gonna stop somewhere here.
Right, because I mean, when I looked at this, it says 24.5 as a spot grade where it should be 25.
Yeah.
And so the grades didn't seem to work and I couldn't
No, no, we recognized that was a drafting, I think, but we, we picked that up and, I mean, we, we did change it and will be shown on the next submission.
Okay, then there's a couple of things that I think could be conditions and, and you know, that will ultimately be required, some stuff, you know, I'm almost done, but so first one, you know, the roof pitches to the front and to the rear. So if your gutter doesn't have the capacity for 100-year storm, and this is a big roof, you need to have enough downspouts and there's a calculation for the gutter capacity, which could be a condition with the building permit, but I would recommend the board include that as a condition. I mean, the backside actually doesn't matter because it will still get into the drainage system, but the front would go into the road.
Yeah. Okay, we'll, we'll take care of that.
The wall in the back is, it's probably not gonna break out there, but it is very close to a steep slope. And if you look at the DEP handbook, generally for, for systems that infiltrate, you're supposed to be a distance away. It would be, I think, useful to just demonstrate that if there is a mound effect and you get good soils and maybe you don't have one, that it won't break out on that slope by the wall.
Right.
A simple calculation.
Right, we, we did, the, if you recall, Mr. Cheshia, we did the, it's all sandy material in the area. We did the, 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 but also, I mean, we tried to accommodate at least 10 feet away from the wall because that's, that's the normal engineering standards to, to, to provide 10 feet separation. And what do you think of having a barrier along that side of the wall like, like a, a, a plastic 40 mil, something like?
I think that what I would do is look at sort of a, one of those, you know, it's not that complicated to do the Hantush mounding analysis to see if it would get up to that level. It may not get there with the soils you have.
Right, that's
It may not, but if you provide that and it shows that you don't get out, you know, it doesn't break out the wall and it's in the record and everybody's covered. Because usually you don't want, you know, membranes and stuff behind, retaining walls typically are set to be free draining so that you don't get a buildup of hydrostatic pressure behind it. And I'm not saying that you will. I'm just questioning whether or not it's a possibility that we should kind of get.
I mean, we, if we do that, we would put probably like a four-inch drain on the bottom with the perforated pipe to, to the, to, you know, along the, the side so you don't have that buildup, but we'll, 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 we'll jump into that.
It might be fine. I'm not saying that it's a problem. Just saying if you demonstrate that it's not a problem, that would be helpful. Now, this one, I mean, this is a discretionary permit for a gas station. It's my understanding, under the permit you're applying for, there's a lot of issues that, you know, you're providing a lot of different information, but I have been asking for proof that you have an equivalent to an oil grid separator. The storm scepters are a swirl chamber. That's gonna, if there's a gas spill, that's gonna resuspend and typically, you put an oil grid separator sized for the, I think you said the biggest tank is 3,500 gallons, which is not an enormous tank, and you would have that to catch it. The catch basins don't provide much. You got a six-inch hood, that's 47 gallons float. The rest of it's gonna go out the pipe, so that doesn't help much. And I don't know what the capacity of the, the storm scepters or the, whatever, whatever you use, whatever proprietary unit it is, I don't remember which specific one, but it's gotta be proven to have an equivalency. And typically for API standards, there's a velocity, so you need a cross-sectional area to separate the gas from the water. And the easiest way to do it and probably the least expensive is oil grid separator for those two catch basins or three catch basins, and two of them, I guess, tie together. So that would address it. You just want to make it big enough to hold in case there's a gas spill. That's my recommendation to the board. So other places I've reviewed, that's what they have done.
And how big would big enough be, Joe?
I think it's 3,500 gallons, you said, was the largest gas segment in a tanker truck. If something breaks, the worst case would be a hose breaks or fitting breaks and that tank drains out. And I know there's a lot of safety features and I know it's unlikely to happen, but, you know, things do happen. And when they do, it's right in the sand. It's gonna be a nightmare.
Okay, so, John, are you, are you suggesting that we add, maybe if I add the 2,000-gallon oil-water separator structure before, before, after the the storm scepter?
In place of, I would say. You don't need to have both. Oil grid, the oil grid separator would give you equivalent pretreatment. You still have the valve to shut it down. And you'd have a catch basin for 25%. You'd have the oil grid separator for 25%. That gives you 44% pretreatment. You wouldn't need the storm scepter. So the cost is gonna be roughly
Wash.
But you do need an extra manhole because the oil grid separator has to, you know, be a offline unit. So, I mean, a gas spill wouldn't be the same as a 10-year storm in terms of the volume of water. But you would, the valve But you would, the valve should be at the final manhole where they connect in, so you might need to add a manhole with a weir, and then the valve manhole might just have the valve inside, or it might have to be a little bit bigger manhole, so you can get at it. Or an inline valve, like you, yeah, if you had a, you can put an inline valve in a, you had duct-to-line pipe, you could just put a regular gate box that's labeled as an option, and you, you know, too, but, uh, I think that's other gas stations I've reviewed, that's what people have done. Um, and I would recommend it to the board, but I, you know, I don't have a vote or anything, so the board should weigh in on what they would require for that. And then the last two, which are quick, and you know them anyway, you need a stormwater pollution prevention plan, I recommend that that could be a condition, but the board would not wanna issue any permits or anything until that's been approved by the board. And the latest O and M didn't include the manufacturer's manuals, but that's fine, that could also be a condition that at the end of the day, whatever manufacturer manuals you need is all included in the O and M, and usually that's a separate little document that goes with, you know, you don't wanna dig it out of a stormwater report, you want it to be its own thing that the owner has, and town has, and anybody that needs to operate the site would have. And that's all I got.
Okay, John, thank you very much, and I'll turn it now over to Karen.
Well, then, can we go back to John's issue? What is the board, what does the board want? Does the board want a separate oil and grit separator with the capacity of thirty-five hundred gallons?
I would say I would.
Yeah, I'm, I'm deferring to our expert there, he's recommending it, that I'm, I'm on board with it.
I agree with Steve and Ian, and if that's what the professional says, that's what we need to do.
Oh, I also would, uh, go with our, um, consultant's, uh, peer-reviewed opinion. Uh, and I think out of an abundance of caution, that might, like philosophically, I agree that that's the way to go, I guess.
Rebecca?
You're muted.
No, I'm not. I'm gonna go with you guys too on that, whatever, I would go with what John said.
And Bob? You muted.
Nothing for me.
Okay, alright.
Alright, so then it looks like the board wants that, so let me start with my list. The outdoor amenity space, ten percent of the lot is required, that's four thousand seven, um, seven eighteen square feet. The outdoor dining area has been increased in size, because now we have benches along the whole front of the building, so that's seventeen forty square feet. They've added a grass area in the back with benches and trees. Um, it's my opinion that that could be classified as a pocket park. It has everything, I mean, you don't want recreation equipment there, but the lawn area is eighteen hundred square feet. Um, some of it, some of the lawn area is on a four-to-one slope, but there is a decent, you know, there is a decent area there. Um, the two areas add up to thirty-five, forty square feet, and then you have landscaped open area in the setback around the site. It would appear to me that they've really tried to meet the intent of the outdoor amenity space. Does the board agree?
I certainly agree, yes. Steve?
Um, so, may, maybe I just wanna make sure I understand your math here, Karen, so you're saying the outdoor dining area plus the pocket park is about thirty-five hundred and forty square feet?
Right.
And that the open space and the setback ought to be included in that calculation, so at that point, we're over the fit, forty-seven?
Yes, that's what I'm saying, because that's essentially what you did on eighteen Ford Place.
Yeah.
So I'm.
I would be okay with that.
And Ben?
Um, I also agree, uh, I was looking at the latest site plan as well as the newly submitted landscape plan, and I think that, um, given the, the use of the site, I think that this is a, um, a, a really valiant effort to try to meet the, uh, the requirements of the bylaw, so I, I think it, it's pretty good, and, um, I think that also the direction it's gone with the outdoor amenity space, as well as the, how that integrates with the new landscape design plan is, is far superior to, to what we had kind of initially.
Addie?
I agree with both Betty and Steve.
Rebecca?
Too, I'm with those, with Ben.
Okay, Bob?
I agree, uh, with the, with Ben.
Okay, thank you, Karen?
Alright, so the, um, next topic I have is landscaping. I reviewed the landscape plan, I think it's acceptable. I think that they need to add a tree in that one island in the back. Um, the meadow has been pulled back to the limit of work with the note added that ten native cedar trees can be added at the town's discretion. I think that's a good solution, um, to potential, you know, open areas that we might not know of now, um, to block, um, any potential light spillage in the back. Um, I also rec, I spoke, uh, with the landscape architect, and I indicated to him that I'd rather see, he was specifically trying to use all native plants. I said, I'd rather see something that works rather than it being a hundred percent native. So I think the landscape plan is far improved than the first pass, and I think it's acceptable, except for the addition of one tree.
Alright, Ben, you're our landscape person?
Um, I, I, I totally agree with, with Karen, um, I think, yeah, the, the addition of the tree, obviously to, to meet the bylaw, um, and then their tree requirements, and then, uh, I, I, I like to plan a lot, I think they, it's a better use of the space, I like the planting plan and, and the species that they've picked. Um, the one thing I would note, which should be, I don't know if should be noted somewhere, it just needs to be kept in mind, is that for the meadow area, um, and I guess the planning board should be aware of this too, cuz we sometimes put a, a condition of a one-year guarantee on plant material and things. Um, the meadow, a seeded meadow really takes about three to five years to establish properly, um, to, so I think there needs to be there a note on the landscape plan, or some sort of oversight, um, and I can work on a condition maybe for the final, uh, decision, but, uh, it, it can't just be seeded and let go, or it's just gonna revert to weeds and invasive species, so I really would like to see that done right, since it's, um, something that I think is, is a good idea, but we also don't want it to turn into a weed lot, nor does the, I'm sure the, the owner, um, want that, cuz then it becomes kind of uh, not a great end product, and rather than being something nice that's aesthetically pleasing, it makes people kind of feel a little bit, uh, uneasy, so to speak, so kind of coming up with a way that, that, uh, is done appropriately would be, would be kind of paramount, cuz I didn't see any notes in the plan regarding the, um, installation and O and M of that seed, seeded meadow area.
Alright, Patty?
Well, I defer to both, uh, landscape architects, thanks.
Steve?
Yeah, no, that, that sounds fine to me, I'm with Ben.
Rebecca?
Me too.
Bob?
Me too.
Alright, Ben, if you could get me that condition, then I can incorporate it in a draft decision.
Yeah, yeah, I just thought of that.
Okay.
Earlier when I was looking at this, thanks.
Alright, so the next thing I have on my list is signage, the signage has been provided, the, uh, designer review committee wants to see it again before pri- final implementation, but that can be a condition. Um, the sign is not internally lit, has the board looked at it? Does the board have any issues with the signage?
Can we put it up on the screen here? Whoever has control of it.
Uh, I'd just like to say too, when this comes up, I'm not, I'm not married to any of the design of the sign, I mean, I'm not married to any of it, so we're, we're open to, to any, anything you guys have to say here, we're, uh, we're definitely flexible in terms of what we do here.
So the projected height of this sign with the, uh, stone footing, um, stone wall at the bottom is fifteen feet two inches, which they have brought the height of the signage down.
And it's lit from the top, it looks like.
Right.
No.
How about the green color?
We can get rid of that, um, if you look, uh, if you wanna take a look at a sign that looks a lot like this, I actually got the idea from the, um, the Irving Station in Pembroke at the corner of one thirty-nine, and, um, I don't know, it's a brand-new Irving Station in Pembroke, um, but certainly we don't need the green color. And, and likely, if, you know, some of these, uh, other tenants are probably going to wanna have their own colors there, and I assume that's gonna be contingent on approval by the, uh, design review committee.
Can I ask how bright that signage is and how long the lights are gonna stay on?
Hal, you wanna speak to that? I don't.
I, yeah, the, uh, the, the lights, uh, with, uh, duration, I think, uh, will be during the, uh, uh, the dark hours during, uh, and I'm not sure what the business hours are yet for the, I know there was some discussions last time with the, but will be during the business hours, so they'll turn on. The, the intensity will be, this is, this is a, a white light projecting upwards from, from the sign directly, I mean, up to, to the side, and will be contained to the area of the sign, there'll be no spillage of, of lights to the street or to the adjacent properties.
It's projecting down, right?
Yes, down, yeah.
Down, yeah, okay.
Okay, anybody else? I think it should go to design review.
Yeah, I think, I think by the time tenants, they're gonna have their own logos and
Right.
colors here or something, and we, yeah, we should have design review.
Alright, so, but I can condition that so that, you know, it, once they get, once they work on getting the tenants, it can go to design review after, afterwards, um, so that we get a real sign.
Yes.
Okay.
And, and is there anything on the backside of this, or is this just a one-way sign? Is this?
It's too.
It's too sided. It's too sided, yeah. So there are lights on both sides too, then?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Hard to tell.
Alright, Karen?
Um, I think that they can go further down on this page and show you the building signage.
Okay.
Uh, I'm not sure, Karen, if I have the building signage on here, uh, I think it might be on the architects, but I'll, I'll, I'll.
Oh, I thought it was on the same plan, wait.
Oh. I, I think originally we might have had them when we had the architectural as part of the package, but I don't believe we had the, uh,
I can send, no, sorry. Did I unmute? I can send that over to you, Hal, if you can grab it off email and share it.
Sure.
Okay.
Alright, so while he's doing that, can we talk about projected hours of operation? Um, I know the applicant had indicated they wanted to work, uh, have this open five AM to twelve AM. Um, I'm not sure we, the planning board sees it that way. Um, so I think we need to talk about what you wanna condition.
I think six to ten is more than adequate. I don't know how anybody else feels, Patty?
Uh, I would not make them any longer, I think that we are kind of at the whim of the MBTA station right now, can we kinda condition that to see the traffic pattern and stuff?
Well, the first train for the MBTA is like five-thirty, right?
Yeah.
Five-twenty-five.
Yeah, so I, I think five AMs.
Five AM, yeah.
Right, um, and I guess I just wonder whether, um, ten PM is, is a little too early. I, I understand, I, I mean, you, you wanna make sure they, they cover, you know, the period that, uh, that, um, you know, you have demand, and I, I guess, what, what do we have for some of these other gas stations in town?
Well, the other gas stations in town are not equivalent to this site, because the other gas stations in town do not have a convenience store.
Yeah.
So the other gas stations in town generally close at eight o'clock, but it's not, it's not the same thing.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of why I'm thinking even ten PM sounds a little bit early. I, I'm not really particular, I don't particularly object to five to twelve, but, um, five to eleven, um, would be okay as well. I think five AM seems reasonable to me, there are a lot of people up and about by then.
What does the rest of the board think?
Rebecca?
Um, I think I'm going to agree with longer hours, I think, um, there is nothing open in situ at early. If you're trying to get out and you need to stop and get gas, you, you basically have to drive two towns over, or at least one town over.
Yeah, so, you have to go to Colhasset.
Yeah.
To get, um, that station's open, I think it's open twenty-four-seven.
Yeah, it is.
And they have
Yeah.
They have a general store with them.
Yep.
Yeah, some of the business in town, right, so.
Yeah.
That was whatever the board feels is best. Bob, what do you think?
Uh, I like the longer hours, um, I think five AM for opening is good, the first train's actually at five forty. Uh, and, um, the staying open, uh, later, eleven o'clock, I don't know, midnight, but, um, yeah, just having, having a facility open, uh, in town is important.
Yeah.
The last train comes in at twelve.
Still?
Yeah, I think it's twelve.
Yeah, it's twelve o'clock. So, I'm, you know, a lot of this is gonna change, hopefully they won't be cutting the T up, the T that back. Mm-hmm. But we'll see.
Alright, so then I will start, um, in the first draft that I send out, five to eleven, is that what you just said?
I'm going five to twelve, I'm, I'm fine with it.
Okay. Five to twelve.
Else is, but I am.
I'll start with that, and then we can work backwards, so, um, he's got the signage up for the, um, the building.
Ah, okay.
You know, can I just say one more thing about the time? If it doesn't work for them to be open to twelve, they can make that choice.
Yeah.
You know, if there's no business from eleven to twelve.
True.
Yeah, that's a good point. That's the front.
Do you want me to go through the signage here?
Yeah, cuz you just pointed out it, I'm, I'm hard. I'm gonna get my glasses and see it.
So this is, this, this, uh, side is the one facing the fuel dispensers, so this is on the, the, the non-street-facing side of the building. So, um, and over, there's a, um, on the left side here, you see the sandwich, um, uh, sign, and that is just kind of somewhat directional, because we don't have a door there, we're kind of pointing people around the corner to the, uh, to where the, um, where the proposed restaurant will be.
Yep.
Um, and then right over the door is the, that would be the Green Bush General Store sign, um, or whatever the name of it happens to be, but that's, I think that's our working name right now. Um, and then over on the other side, um, we, we're thinking we're potentially gonna have, uh, a coffee offering inside, and maybe some other type of food offering, so we wanna let people know that that's, uh, that those things are there, are inside too.
Could you, um, just move it over? Uh, well, maybe all my pictures are cut. There you go.
Yeah, you got it. Yeah.
Back, 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 back. Little more.
Perfect. Okay.
All right, that, I, those look okay to me. And I, I would assume that like for the restaurant, you'll put up whatever name or whatever goes with that.
Right, exactly.
This is representative. It's not what's actually going to be said necessarily.
Correct. Um, we don't, we don't have any, um, we don't have any deals in place right now. So, uh, but again, we'd be coming back to Design Review for, uh, for their final sign off on it. Generally, right now, we're thinking of some kind of, uh, carved, probably composite sign. So we've seen there, there's a lot of them. We try to keep a pretty, uh, pretty upscale look. And I, I think, I think everyone will be happy with the, uh, the overall aesthetic of it.
Signs on the, on the sides, on the far corners, are they lit? Or are they just?
Go back.
Yeah.
Those are not lit. Uh, we think there'll be enough lighting in the, uh, in the overall, people will be able to see them.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, snow storage?
Uh, wait a minute, wait a minute. This is the.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, the side entrance?
Side entrance.
Yeah, the side entrance, that would be the, the restaurant that happens to.
Okay. And what does the front look like?
Again, we would just be kind of replicating the signs from the side in the back on the, uh, on the front side.
And there's nothing on the other far side?
Correct. We're, uh, yeah, no, we wouldn't, uh, we wouldn't have anything else but those two signs.
Because they're fine.
Yep. Karen?
All right. So moving on, snow storage, it's, um, they have indicated a couple of spaces in the back. I have added, um, there'll be a draft condition that says, uh, if they can't accommodate it on the site, it has to be removed from the site. No, no snow storage in a traveled way.
Okay.
Absolutely. Yep.
Can I ask about salt or sand? Are they going to not put that down because it's so close to the, um, to, to the marsh?
Well, the stormwater is being captured on site, right?
Okay. Just to make sure.
Is that right? Are you doing a hundred percent capture rate?
Absolutely, yeah.
All right, access. The board previously stated that they would agree to waive the secondary means of, um, access. I'm just verifying that you're still okay with that. Because we have to, uh, one way in and two lanes out. So it accomplishes the same thing. Um, I sent you an email this week, um, from our, uh, traffic engineer, because they, they took the lane down, the, the concrete milled rumble strip that's six feet like Mr. Durk had recommended. And he commented that the turning analysis for the fuel truck demonstrates that the driveway has been reduced and with to the minimum allowable for a fuel truck. And the plan reflects all his comments. And, um, I sent him some draft findings of fact and conditions. And he agreed with everything that I had in there. So I think access is okay. Parking, parking is going to be minimally visible from Driftway. An attempt has been made to screen the parking. Technically, that's going to require a waiver from the board. Is the board okay with that waiver?
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with.
I am as well.
I, yeah, I'm okay considering the parkings in the back behind the building.
That was the whole point.
Right. That's the whole point. Right.
That was the whole point.
All right, surety, we will be conditioning surety for the project. Surety is going to have to, per site plan approval. Yeah, it'll have to be the landscaping, the drainage, signage, conditions of approval. We just want to let you know that right now.
Right.
And the, uh, and the public amenities?
You mean mitigation, Steve?
No, I'm, I'm talking about, uh, the, the seating area and the.
Yeah, I can, I can, um, I can put that in as well for the surety.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, um, light spill over. Um, I think that Hal has already addressed that. They have reduced, um, the foot Campbell candles in the, to the east and to the south and to the west. So that there's just a little bit of light spill over onto the road, which I think is, um, with the sidewalk out there, I think it is, um, certainly appropriate.
All right.
Okay.
Are we using, uh, I asked this question before, I just want to confirm, we're, we're using warmer lights? We're not using like blue lights?
No, white.
Well, white, I know, but we're using LED lights, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Just, you know, head towards the warm end of the spectrum, not the blue end of the spectrum.
Correct.
Okay.
Karen?
All right, the wall?
Wait a minute, Karen, I'd like to add one more thing to this. Before you go on, um, is there any possibility, and I think that there should be, an electric charging station? Because that seems to be the wave of the future. Electric cars. So has any thought been given to a charging station?
Can I address that or do you want Karen? We are going to fit it up for electric charging. Um, we're very aware that it's coming and, uh, maybe sooner than later. We're not actually sure that gas stations are going to end up being the place where people charge their cars. I think it might end up being a Starbucks or the grocery store or something, but we would, we would like to have them in there. The technology is moving so fast right now that I'm not sure that we're going to get the exact type of charger we want in immediately. But we are going to fit it up for a charger and we'd be open to, you know, putting at least a couple in there. I mean, we, we were, we were kind of, shouldn't say we're planning on it, but we, we definitely, as I said, we're definitely going to fit it up for, to have the electricity for chargers in there.
Okay, good. Thank you.
All right, that sounds good. The wall, it's over four feet tall in the back. You're going to need a building permit for that. And likely a fence on top for the lower portion is that a butts lawn area with the benches, that public amenity space. You're not, you're not going to want to have, um, any accidents there.
No, we will.
Uh, the bollards that are located, um, they need to be located to prevent a car from driving into the building. Usually the bollards are located in the middle of us, of the spaces. The front yard, um, I need, I need a more definitive way to look on the plans to tell how much in the front yard is pervious versus impervious. Because there's, um, 25% is required. If there's more than 25% of pavement in the front yard, it's got to be, um, pervious. And so I'm, I really don't see a way that we can make that calculation.
I'll, I'll put a table, the front yard, I think all, everything in the front yard except the driveway is going to be pervious. It's, it's, the, the walkways are pervious and then you have a landscape between the walkway and the sidewalk.
Right, but I need a calculation of those, of that areas.
I'll, I'll provide that.
All right. And so my final topic is mitigation. Uh, we know that they will be doing striping in the, um, in New Driftway down to the, uh, down to approximately, um, 28 New Driftway. It's going to just blend in with down there. Does the board want any other mitigation for the project?
I'll throw it out to the board. I, I, I think that there should be. What do you all think? Patty?
Oh, I agree. Uh, mitigation comes with part of the project.
Okay. Steve?
Um, yeah, I, I, I guess what, what to me would be important from a mitigation point of view is that, you know, we're trying to create an entryway coming in to Green Bush. And this is going to be sort of the first, first major modification in that, in that, uh, area coming in. And I would just think that from a mitigation point of view, we, that there ought to be some way to, to, support, maybe trying to keep that, uh, that area way coming in as, um, you know, kind of look, looks like it's designed, uh, to be integrated as opposed to sort of a patchwork of things. And maybe that's sidewalks or, or, you know, uh, lighting or whatever that is, um, you know, that's going to be the same all the way, coming in through there all the way. And, you know, maybe that means that there's some, some mitigation money that could go to the sort of the common good of creating, you know, um, a, a common look and feel uh, for the, probably for the sidewalks, um, as the area develops.
Rebecca?
That's kind of, I guess that's my thinking on it.
All right, thank you. Rebecca?
Can you, um, Karen, can you just repeat the very beginning of what you said again and what is going to happen?
Um, they've agreed to do some striping in the roadway so that there'll be the, the additional basically left turn lane, um, all, all the way down to about where it goes, um, 28 New Driftway, there, it goes down there.
That's right. We, now that, we talked about that last time.
And they will be doing the 10-foot sidewalk in the, um, in front of their property as well.
As, as, does anyone have an idea for mitigation? Or just, we need to think about that?
I think we all need to think about it because this hearing will be continued. So if any thoughts that you have, if you be kind enough within the next, say the first week in January, to get your thoughts to Karen about what you would like to see.
Okay. What's, what's the plan for the sidewalk itself? What's it made out of? It's going to look like?
Um, I believe the sidewalk was concrete, right?
Hal, can you speak to that?
Uh, the sidewalk, I believe it's, I don't know, sidewalk, yeah, not concrete, no.
Um, I think the zoning, I, we, then we got to check again. I think the zoning bylaw requires a concrete sidewalk. So why don't you double check and I'll double check. Um, but I thought that the sidewalk was supposed to be concrete and I will, I'll double check with DPW.
Okay.
That sidewalk is public right of way, right?
That's public right of way. And it's going to be, uh, conditioned to have all the appropriate ADA, curb cuts, handicap ramps, even though they're not shown on the plan, it's going to have to have them all. And they will be, uh, loc, and if they have to be located in the field with DPW's approval, they will be located with DPW's approval. But they all have to be ADA accessible.
Yep.
All right, Karen, anything else?
Um, no, I don't, I, that was my, that was my list.
Are there any additional comments from the board about this before I, I move to what public comment?
No, I, I think we've done a pretty good list here. Let's hear.
Okay, I will do Q and A.
Okay. So if you would like to ask a question, please, um, raise your hand. It should be in the lower, in the label, in the button on your screen, or if you're on the telephone, you're going to hit, push star nine to raise your hand if you're, uh, participating remotely just via phone. So we are open for Q and A for the pub, from the public. Oops. Okay.
We will have somebody up top?
We do have someone?
You do, yes, Claire.
Just hold on just a moment.
There I am.
There we go. She's on.
Hi, this is Claire Hanifin. I live at, uh, 60 New Drift, Driftway in Unit Nine. A couple of things, um, I have questions about number one, the hours of operation. We have, uh, some of our units have direct view of the building that is there right now. And so the hours of operation and the lighting, I know that they've covered that so far. And also the sound, will there be music at the pumps? Um, how loud would it be?
Ads, music.
Ads, you know, sometimes when you fill up your car, you, all of a sudden, music and ads come on. So that would be a great concern to us because it is very quiet down here and sound travels.
Okay, good point.
And also, I'm sorry, also, am I still on?
Yes.
Also, um, my question to Mr. Cutler and his people are, have they come down to this property and walked around to see how it might affect some of the condo, uh, unit owners who had, do have a direct line of vision to this place?
Well, I've been down there several times. Uh, I haven't entered any of the condo units, but, um, I mean, we've, and we've spoken in, in depth and emailed with, uh, Mr. Attorney Ingber, who, um, who represents some of your other condo members. I'm not sure if he represents your point of view, but, we're, we're definitely trying to do as much as we can. That was part of the, when Hal was speaking about shielding the, uh, canopy lights, the canopy lights go directly down anyways. But, uh, we understand that you're at a little bit of a lesser elevation. So you might, you might possibly look up and see that there, uh, see some glare from them. So we, we recessed them another six inches further into the canopy, versus what we would normally do. Um, and obviously we spoke to the spillover of lights. Uh, we'd also be willing to, uh, as, as a town said, at their discretion, if they want us to plant more trees to help, uh, shield any glare, then we're certainly, uh, willing to do that.
Yeah, I, I appreciate what you've done so far. My concern is I don't want to look out my window and see a gas station.
I hear you. I hear you. Um, and we'll certainly, you know, we'll do as much as we can to, you know, to make it a, a, a good view for you.
And also will you, will there be music and sound at the pumps?
Uh, well, there's definitely has to be some sound at the pumps. They need to have, um, they need to have a two-way system in, into the, uh, gas station itself.
That I understand. I'm, I'm, right now, when you go to gas stations and the newer ones, as soon as you put the gas, you know, you put your credit card in there, music comes on and ads come on and so.
Right. Um, generally speaking, we, we probably would have those if, you know, if it turns out to be too loud, then we could either turn it down or get rid of the sound.
I think I was proposing a condition to not have that.
Yeah, I would not agree more. No music or, or sound, other than, other than what's absolutely positively necessary.
Yes.
Yes.
Yay.
Yay, thank you.
Well, there you go. That's what I was thinking too, actually.
All right. All set?
I muted them.
All right.
If there's any additional questions, they should speak, they should raise their hand now.
Put my hand up?
Oh, okay.
Okay. I, I, just a couple of questions.
Could you identify yourself, sir?
Oh, this is Bob Hawk at 60, uh, New Driftway, Unit Number Seven. It sounds like this project is moving ahead. Uh, I would ask two questions. Do any of you folks live near it? You don't have to answer. You don't have to answer. So don't. But my big concern is, once this project moves forward, will there be conditions that any, any violations, any spillovers, any deficiencies shall be? shall be rectified after the fact, not will, may be?
That goes without saying, sir. It will be monitored within an inch of its life.
And one other question. I had had an opportunity to drive by the new Cumberland Station being put in at the corner of Route 53 and 3A. I'm looking at the gasoline station pad there. It's enormous. Will this one be the same size?
I don't think it will be. I think the Cumberland's generally build them with they overbuild. Well, I shouldn't say they overbuild them. That one is you're talking about the one in Hanover, right off the highway?
Yes.
It used to be a Friendly's, I think. I mean, that's a massive place and it's going to be probably three times as busy as anything that that we could hope to expect to have at our place. So I think they probably have six to eight dispensers there and we're only going to have four, so.
It looks like Four Islands to me.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm.
Well, it it may be. It may be, but it's certainly going to be a lot busier than than our place.
I'm more concerned about the, I'm going to say the light Corona that's emitted from a canopy of that size. There can't help but be one.
I hear you. I mean, that's that's an issue for a lot of people and it has been an issue and and what there's been a, there's been a ton of mitigation happened in in the light technology where there's there's zero spillover, certainly from the canopy. You don't have the canopy's well within the confines of the yard. I mean, there's not going to be any spillover and all the lights go straight down. So there really won't be any light spillover from the canopy.
Do all the lights, just a question, this is Steve Pritchard, just a question, do the lights, you know, when you close, do you turn off all the lights or do some stay on or is it some diminished number of lights just for safety or what?
I think it would be yard lights would stay on, certainly not the canopy lights. You probably have some yard lights on for safety.
And would those yard lights have the capacity to be dimmed? Like 50% of their intensity or whatever?
That's a good question. I think Hal can answer that. I think he's looked into that.
Yeah, I mean, the the safety lights will be less intense than the other lights, then you have, you can control them correctly. And it, they're very, very lightly visible just for for security and for the camera to be able to detect any movement in the backyard, but definitely there'll be no, no signs, no no lit signs or or canopy or any of that, you know.
Okay.
All right. Are we all set? Any further comments from the public?
Yep.
Anybody else?
Yeah.
Okay. Who do we have?
Yeah, Jennifer Kuhn, 20, Cary Litchfield Lane. I had a question about the conditions and how we should report any violations about the conditions. And what is the procedure for enforcing those conditions? Would there be fines assessed? Would the project be shut down? There could be a lot of safety issues. I specifically had a very bad experience with the sidewalk situation at the current senior center project. And I just hope that the conditions will be enforced and I'd like to know that the procedure on how to report those violations.
Karen, would you like to address that?
We we enforce the planning board, we enforce our conditions, we do the best we can. And that's what I'm going to say during construction and after construction, we will be enforcing the conditions.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? Sharon?
You're good.
All right. Let's end the Q and A.
We have one more question.
One more, okay.
Yes, thank you. Excuse me, this is more of a comment, not so much a question. This is Rob Kirchner. We are with Fulcrum Harbor LLC, the the neighbor we own, 56 New Driftway.
Yes.
And there's always been a lot of, a lot of work that has gone into this project to date. This has been a great, great discussion tonight and we are really excited about the enhancements that this is going to bring to the site itself and the area overall. So thank you everyone for all the work that has has gone into this so far.
Thank you, sir. Last call.
Okay, that's the end for Q and A.
All right, thank you. All right, if there is nothing else, I have a motion. I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing for the site plan review and special permit for gas backwards building and additional commercial space in the Village Center and Neighborhood District, Green Bush Gateway District, New Driftway Transit Village Sub-District, BCN, GDG, NDTV, property located at 48 to 52 New Driftway until January 28, 2021, at 6:30 PM, and continue the time for action until February 26, 2021. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Ms. Barbine?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert? Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Bornstein?
Yes.
Mr. Pritchard?
Yes.
Unanimous, all in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And those of you that are leaving the meeting, please make sure you leave the meeting and not end the meeting.
Thank you very much, everybody. See you in January. Happy holidays.
Thank you.
You too. Okay, so we have 12 minutes before our next public hearing, so we can approve minutes.
Okay, I move to approve the meeting minutes for December 3, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Ms. Barbine?
Hi.
Ms. Lambert?
Hi.
Ms. Lewis?
Hi.
Mr. Bornstein?
Hi.
Mr. Pritchard?
Hi.
Unanimous, all in favor. Thank you.
Okay, accounting?
I move to approve the requisition of $125 to Ockus Company for the annual service contract for the typewriter maintenance for $1,563.60 to the Horsey Witten Room for the peer review services for Seaside and Situate Base 2.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
What did you say the first thing was?
For the typewriter.
Typewriter.
$125 for the annual service contract for the typewriter maintenance. I don't know anybody else who has a typewriter. I love it.
Actually, we still use it. People, we have the only functioning typewriter in Town Hall.
Really?
You were going to say North America.
That's it. It is about 18 years old.
I love it.
All right. Who's seconding this?
I will.
All in favor?
Ms. Barbine?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Bornstein?
Hi.
Mr. Pritchard?
Yes.
Thank you. Unanimous, all in favor.
Okay, layers on reports. Does anybody have anything to report?
No.
I do not.
No, CPC is meeting. Let's see. Monday, traffic rules are meeting. CPC is meeting and discuss a number of different things, including the possibility of purchasing for, I think it's 443 Chief Justice Cushing Highway. Remember the project that went in with the 16 units above the reservoir?
Yes.
Yes. Well, I think the town is going to try and purchase that because somebody had come forward with an idea of putting in 220 units of 40B. And the last thing we need, I know, is to put in some type of mega housing. What?
Right on the reservoir?
Right on the reservoir. So I think it's past the time that the town, through one way or another, purchases this property.
Wholeheartedly agree.
Okay, so at some point, we might need a letter from the planning board to support this item. And right now, it's between the the owners, the real estate agents, and the Board of Selectmen. So that's what I have to report on that one. Planning and development?
We remain very busy. We are going to be talking a little later tonight about zoning, so we're working on zoning. We're working on multiple projects. I'd like everybody to take a drive by Seaside at Situate after Tuesday night and let me know what you think of the the sign. The progress, it's that project is comment is, you know, continuing. I think we have probably about 50, somewhere between 50 and 55 units that are have occupancy permits.
When you say look at the sign, you're talking about the entrance?
Yeah, I'm talking about the signage at the entrance.
On Tilden Road.
Yeah.
Tilden, no, Tilden and.
Oh.
Havel.
Okay.
Okay, so both, both places, please. The ZBA has on their December 22 agenda a special permit for two 50-foot frontage lots for Zero Man Hill Road, the Tyrell property, the one that you guys have had, that you're in current public hearing and public meeting for the site plan administrative review for a common driveway and the stormwater permit. And it would appear they have a whole, they have a different lot shape for configuration designed to try to eliminate the common driveway. I didn't know if the board wanted to send a comment letter.
So they're going to, they're going to try to modify the lot structure and then redesign the whole thing?
They're going to try to modify the lot structure and put a two-foot separation between the two foot, the two 50-foot frontage lots with a rat tail so that they don't need a common driveway.
Isn't that wonderful? No. Not really.
Beats the purpose of having common driveways, right? I mean, what? I, well, did we, should we write a letter to the zoning board?
That's what I'm asking you. Would you like to write a letter to the zoning board? Would you like me to draft a letter for your review? And I'll have, I'll scan the plan in and you can see what the new plan. Of course, it's just lots they're showing, hasn't come to you for Form A yet, but I can show you a projected plan.
I would be in favor of looking at a draft.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then I will do that.
Thank you.
Then I will do that. And then I will be going to the Board of Selectmen meeting on Tuesday night to talk about the housing production plan. So I don't know, Anne, if you want me to just segue into that since we have five minutes before we can start the next public hearing.
Yes, fine.
So as you know, we've been working on the housing production plan. Our plan is currently expired. It expired on August 4. We need to have these to be in conformance with state law. Karen Sonneborg has prepared the new plan. I have distributed to you all and we're asking for its approval so that it can then go to get Board of Selectmen approval and then be submitted to the state. Changes were made to emphasize that essentially not a lot can happen without infrastructure being there to support to support housing units.
I saw they added something there, so I think that's good. I mean, I might have been a little more aggressive, but in any event, at least it's it's being addressed and I think that's really important.
Yeah, I think it's addressed in multiple places in the plan. Unfortunately, their prior, the priority one strategies still include 40R, 40S, which we know is not a possibility because we can't certify infrastructure capacity, but it's a plan. We're working on two of the other things already that are in the priority one strategies, so I would, I would recommend that we approve it so that it can get to the state for certification.
And is the infrastructure statement also in the priority one?
No, the priority, the summary of housing strategies is a table.
Yep.
And so it, I mean, it's leading in in all the discussion, it has several places where we talk about infrastructure that, you know, and so it, but it's not in the, it's not in the table. Because the table summarizes just the housing strategies.
Well, it's interesting that they left the the most important thing off of the table.
It's, 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 it's in multiple, it's in several places in the document.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Anyone else have a comment? I move to approve the Town of Situate Housing Production Plan dated November 2020, prepared by Karen Sonneborg, consultant with technical support from Karen Joseph, Town Planner, and devoted to the select board for their approval prior to submission to the state for their approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah.
So the motion you just read, Anne, I would say we should modify that motion. As we send it to the Board of Selectmen with a cover letter stating that that the the housing plan, we support the housing plan, but note that one of, that the the primary sort of primary objective in the in the housing plan needs to address infrastructure and and infrastructure capacity and upgrades.
Is there a second as amended to the motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Ms. Barbine?
Hi.
Ms. Lambert? Ms. Lewis?
Yep.
Mr. Bornstein?
Hi.
Mr. Pritchard?
Yes.
Thank you. Unanimous, all in favor.
Thank you. Okay, we now, it's now 8:30, right on time. We have a public hearing, modification for special permit for mixed-use development, Green Bush Village Gateway District, GDG-GVC, formerly the Village Business Overlay District, V-Vod, 6 McDonald Terrace. Okay, I believe Mr. Morris is here?
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Morris?
Mr. Burwick is here as well.
And Mr. Burwick?
Yep. Good evening. For the record, my name is Gregory Morris, Registered Engineer, Morris Engineering, representing RJP Development, Bob Burwick, who's on the line with us as well. This is a request for a modification to the special permit that was issued in 2018 at Mr. Burwick's property located at 6 McDonald Terrace. As you likely recall, this was an approved project for development of a mixed-use building. The mixed-use building had five residential units and one commercial space. The property is just a little over 12,000 square feet in size. It's located in the Green Bush Overlay District. The property is just a little over 12,000 square feet in size. It's located in the Green Bush Overlay District. Over the past year, the abutting property, 18 Ford Place, was acquired by Don McGill. And the planning board has recently approved plans on Mr. McGill's property, or at least reviewed plans on Mr. McGill's property for development of that. During his preparation of his plans, uh, Mr. McGill approached Mr. Burwick about doing a common driveway or a shared driveway between the two properties, which, uh, we felt makes sense. Uh, and that's really the, the reason why we're before you. We're seeking an amendment to our special permit for three things. One would be to allow the shared access with 18 Ford Place. Looking at the revised plans that I submitted for Six McDonald Terrace, you'll see that the shared driveway straddles the lot line between 18 Ford Place and Six McDonald Terrace. It's still, it remains a 20-foot wide paved accessway. Secondly, we would propose a shift in our building. The proposed building, we would shift it approximately six feet to the northeast as a result of the driveway shift. And then thirdly, interior of the building, um, the exterior would remain the same as was approved, but the interior of the building, um, we had originally proposed the office unit to be an end unit um, on the south end of the building. We're proposing that the office unit be centrally located and be the middle unit of the building now. Overall, the changes don't have any great impact on the site. It does result in a reduction of approximately 300 square feet um, of impervious surface by allowing us to do the common driveway. I turn it over to you for any questions or comments.
Um, so the plans, um, the plans ask for the office unit to be relocated to the middle of the building. I don't see any issue with that. Shifting the building six feet to the northeast actually is a good thing because it provides a little bit more room between the property to, um, abutting Driftway, the, uh, the pizza, the pizza, um, shop. And, um, the shared driveway with 18 Ford Place, um, you conditioned 18 Ford Place that they, if they wanted to do a shared driveway, they actually had to submit another plan. There's no final easement that's been agreed to. And you, we also conditioned, um, 18 Ford that they had to provide the plan to, with enough Spock grades to show a minimum of 1% pitch. Um, it does eliminate impervious, a little bit of impervious area. Um, the the Village Business Overlay District bylaw encourages shared driveways. I think that it just has to be very clear and the location of the actual fire lane, no parking, will have to be located in the field so that nobody actually parks in this, uh, in the 20-foot wide driveway. I don't, I don't see an issue with granting it. I quite honestly really didn't know how to write, um, the condition because you're essentially relying on another project's plan for this project.
I'll open up to the board for discussion. Steve?
Don't we need a plan to attach to this? I, I, I think we need a plan, right? And if it's a common driveway with
It's not a common driveway, Steve. It's a shared driveway.
Well, if it's a shared driveway, right? Um, if, if there's, does that mean that both parties have equal responsibility for the maintenance of driveway?
I haven't seen, I haven't seen an easement document. Well, there's no final easement document that's been agreed. And we haven't seen that. We conditioned that on 18 Ford Place that if they were gonna go ahead with the shared, it had, we had to get the final easement document and that it, um, was not subject to another public hearing. I mean, it was conditioned on this, this project getting a special permit modification and the other, and the other stuff go, being received.
Mr. Burwick?
Yes, so Don McGill sent me a draft of a shared driveway agreement. And in that agreement, it does stipulate that the expenses of maintaining the driveway would be shared equally between the two property owners.
So is, is that agreement, um, or whatever gonna be filed here or?
We require it to be filed under, under, um, we, we set a final ease, we've, a final agreement had to be filed with 18 Ford Place.
So we could, we could certainly provide that final easement once it's, um, you know, once it's executed between the parties, uh, you know, prior to either a building permit or, you know, as a condition of approval.
Uh, and I did put that in the conditions.
Yeah, thank you.
About, um, did, did anybody look at the modifications to stormwater?
So I looked at the stormwater on, um, Six McDonald Terrace. We, we did not modify the stormwater there because we actually have a reduction in the impervious surface. The stormwater at McDonald Terrace was peer reviewed. It was approved for the larger surface area. The grading here essentially stays the same. We are putting a high point right along the lot line. It becomes the crown in the driveway, if you will, so that water on the McGill property stays on the McGill property and water on the Burwick property stays on the Burwick property. So the drainage system for Six McDonald Terrace, I fully believe will, will handle this.
Okay, any further comments?
Um, I have a comment. It's kind of ties into what you guys are getting at with the agreement and any sort of easements and stuff, but also, I, I would imagine that if there's condo docs or HOA docs related to each of these properties, that this change would have to be reflected as well in those documents, um, to make it clearer about the shared responsibility and how that's all gonna work. Likewise, anything related to sweeping or cleaning of, um, the impervious surface of the driveway? If that's in the O and M plan for either property, I think that also needs to be reflected in there as well as to who's responsible, um, for that.
Good points. Greg?
It, it absolutely would be. There is a, um, post-development O and M plan for Six McDonald Terrace that's incorporated into the, uh, documents.
That would be then incorporated into the O and M modified for 18 Ford.
So, so it's, we can incorporate it into the documents that we have control of, which is
Right.
Uh, Six McDonald Terrace. So it would be in all of the condo docs. It would be referenced on the deed. The easements would be on the deed. We would expect that the same would be required of, uh, of McGill next door.
Yes, okay. Karen, anything further?
Um, no, I, I provided the board with a draft, um, draft decision. And, um, I would just, uh, when we get to, when we get to it, I just, uh, noted Ben's concerns.
All right, anybody else? Excuse me?
You have public people on, so should we open it up to a public Q and A, please?
Yeah.
So if you are on for the public and you would like to ask a question or make a comment, please click the button on the right-hand side of the screen on the lower screen. If you're by video, if you are on the telephone, hit star nine. So we will take that at this time, please. I don't see anyone, um, looking to make any comments or questions, so I guess Q and A here, it can be over.
Okay, thank you. All right, I will read through the suggested motion and then we'll go from there. I move to accept Gregory J. Morse's PE, uh, PE request on behalf of Robert Burwick of RJB Development Corporation to modify the special permit for a mixed-use development in the Village Business Overlay District for Six McDonald Terrace to include, one, to relocate the office unit to the middle of the building instead of being an end unit as indicated on the F Architectural Plans by Kelly Ennis Design Sheet A100, A101, A102, A200, A201, A300, Revised Dated 4/14/20. Two, to shift the proposed building six feet to the northeast as shown on the site plan, Modification Sheet One of One for the proposed mixed-use building, Six McDonald Terrace, Accessors Parcels, 53 dash five dash 21 and Parcel A, Situate, Mass, Revised Dated 10/20/20. Three, allow a shared driveway access with 18 Ford Place owned by JV Situate LLC, subject to JV Situate LLC submitting a revised plan showing the common driveway easement and a final easement document signed by all parties provided and conditions required for 18 Ford Place related to the driveway grading. No park, um, no parking, fire lane is to also be indicated on the full driveway width. Layout and grading shall be in substantial accordance with Site Plan 18 Ford Place Revised Dated 11/11/20 and stamped by Kevin S. Grady PE, Timothy R. Bennett PLS, and Bart Lipinski, RLA Sheet One of Seven and Sheet Three of Seven for all conditions of the original special permit are to remain intact. Is there a second for discussion?
Second.
Further discussion?
Yes, um, I guess in accordance with what Ben said, after eight, after driveway grading, we'd probably want to put a sentence, revised condominium documents and operation and maintenance documents must be changed to reflect the shared driveway, um, access.
Uh, yeah, I think, I think that's perfect. I wrote something very similar for that.
Yep, okay.
I guess I'm, uh, let me make sure I'm following the process here, right? The, the, um, the drawings that have, uh, do the, do the drawings that are referenced show the common driveway or the shared driveway?
The drawings that were submitted as part of the special permit modification do not show the shared driveway. They show it, I mean, they show what was approved before.
Okay, well, I think, I think before they proceed to any construction, we'll need revised plans that show the shared driveway.
I agree.
Right, those should be, I think, you know, to the extent that we're going to rely on 18 Ford Place to design this thing, that's fine, but at, at some point, we need this proponent to modify their drawings to integrate this change, including the change to move the building six feet as well, right? So
Greg?
So I, I think, you know, the notion that, that we're saying these things are okay, but we really need to see them submitted for approval. Right, um, so that, um, we make sure that at the end of the day, the record shows for each parcel, what the, what the expected build condition is supposed to be.
Yes.
And then I would say that's the case for all of the other documents too, for, you know, the O and M plans, for the condo docs, as Ben mentioned it, you know, and any, any other documents that need to be amended, right?
Right. All right, Mr. Morris?
Yes, if I may, we submitted a revised plan. It is dated October 2020 and it reflects all those things that Mr. Pritchard just said. It shows the, um, shared driveway onto Six Terrace. It shows the shifted building and it shows the updated grading, um, on the Six Mc property. It also shows on the McGill property, the final layout of the McGill, um, parking lot coming in. So it, it is fully reflected. You have that plan in front of you.
May I just interrupt? Greg, if you'd like to share your screen, you could pull that, that plan up for the board if you want.
Except that 18 Ford Place, we conditioned that they had to submit a revised plan and we, we conditioned that they had to submit grading to show that there was a minimum of 1% pitch.
Sure, so I, I stand condition for, for Ford Place. Uh, I believe Six McDonald Terrace already complies with, with that. That's already depicted on this. Uh, unfortunately, Shari, on this computer screen, I don't have that drawing to share. I don't know if you're able to share it on your end in any, um, but it was the PDF that we submitted on October 20th.
They did show the building as moved and they did show a driveway in a, in the general condition.
Okay, but, but then we're gonna get something from Ford Place that may change that. That, that's what I'm getting at.
No, it should be the same thing. I mean, we, we asked for a final plan from 18 Ford, but we, we did ask for a 1% minimum pitch.
All right, well, we should
Shall we just say, shall we add another condition? A final plan shall be submitted prior to a pre-construction conference? And if the final plan is the same thing, that it's the same thing.
Right, and if it's not, and if there are changes on Ford Place that require change here, we want to see those in it.
Yes.
Yeah, we need to make sure that we memorialize all of these conversations. I think that's what Steve's getting at, is that, you know, we can say anything we want in a meeting, but it needs to be on paper.
Yeah. Yeah, what Patty said.
Okay.
So, so we'll add, the final plan shall be submitted prior to a pre-construction conference. We'll add the other revised condo stuff down in the, um, in the other condition.
Okay.
The final plan reflecting any changes from the final approved, you know, Ford Place plan, right? It'd be resubmitted.
All right, got it.
Okay, um, may I have a second as amended?
Second.
Are all those in favor? Hi.
Ms. Lampert?
Hi.
Ms. Lewis?
Hi.
Mr. Bornstein?
Hi.
Mr. Pritchard?
Hi.
Unanimous, all in favor. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Please, just remember to please leave the meeting, not end the meeting.
Don't end us. We're not done yet. Okay, our next item, zoning articles. Karen?
All right, so, um, right now I have put in, uh, five placeholders for the warrant for the Springtown meeting. One is for dear common street acceptance. One is for the sign by law. One is North Situate, um, Village Center Neighborhood District zoning. One is revisions to floodplain bylaw and another one is master plan acceptance. So as relates to zoning, let me start with the model flood, with the floodplain. We had a meeting yesterday, um, with D, with a member from DEP and Bob McClain actually listened in on the meeting and we're meeting, um, internally with, on with Jim Budrow on Monday, but it appears that this will not be a bylaw change at the moment. We have to make the NFIP floodplain maps. The, um, have to, there's gonna be new ones coming out effective July 6, 2021 and they have to be incorporated. And so there's, in order to maintain Situate's ability to be a CRS community, we have to have the floodplain maps referenced. Right now, the Town of Situate uses the 72, um, town floodplain maps. And so this process really relies on the FEMA maps, which aren't quite issued yet. And you can't have a zoning bylaw without a specific map reference. Uh, because the Attorney General will vote it down. Uh, because the attorney general will vote it down. So the way we're thinking, we need to go at the moment. Is to put all the information in the conservation regulations. And then after the map becomes in existence, maybe go back and end up putting it in the zoning. But it's just. It has to be approved by, it has to be approved by the end of June. Because these maps, the floodplain maps have to be in effect for Situate to keep CRS. So it's kind of an important thing for the town of Situate, um, with the CRS because it gives discounts on insurance. And so I think that. The DEP was recommending we put it in the conservation regs at the moment. So I'd say that's something that will be, um, coming back at a later date.
So this, this would be a regulatory change, but the thing that would really change the zoning and that. Particularly troublesome nineteen seventy-two map is a, a new map that would then have to be. Floated as, as a modification to the bylaw.
Right, it may have to, it may mean we keep the, the seventy-two information and add a whole new section. Like a four seventy-one section so that we have the NFIP maps in there. But we just don't know it. We just don't know a hundred percent at this point in time.
Well. But the, to amend the nineteen seventy-two map with respect to zoning bylaws, we would have to amend the zoning bylaw.
To amend the seventy-two map, we would, but we wouldn't be amending the seventy-two map. We would be adding. The FEMA maps in as a whole new thing that has to be complied with.
Yeah, but that would be for conservation. That would not be for zoning.
At the moment, it would not be, at, at the moment, that's the way we're thinking we need to go. That may change in a year's time.
Yeah, cuz ultimately, we, we oughta. We oughta align those things, right, with the latest map, nineteen seventy-two map, as we have found out in the past is. Is a pretty crude.
It's a, right, but it's a, it's a pretty crude map, but it goes further inland than some of the. Then some of the, um, FEMA maps. So there has to be some study and justification at some point in time. You are correct. It's just because something has to get enacted, it's prob, it's probably going in the conservation regs now. Um, and then we'll address it after, um, after the maps are issued.
So does that mean that the conservation regs will effectively supersede zoning?
No. The conservation regs are still gonna regulate work in the floodplain and some of the new uses. That some of the new items that are gonna be regulated in the floodplain, paving. Um, fencing, some of those things are going to be regulated in the floodplain. And conservation, um, regulates work in the floodplain. We thought we were gonna have to do it for zoning. We just had this meeting yesterday. We're meeting with the town administrator on Monday. Um, to explain all this to him and pretty much hopefully get a final, final call for the moment. There will definitely be more to come.
Okay.
I will wait.
All right, so the next bylaw that we are definitely doing for the Springtown meeting is we're going back to signs. Um, the last version, um. What we're, what we're gonna do for the Fall Town Meeting was good version nine that we ended up with in the Spring. Town Council had a few more comments and I sent them out to our consultant Judy Barrett. And she is reviewing them. She will be, um. She'll be incorporating town council's few minor comments. And it'll be substantially the same thing that was, uh, approved by the planning board last year to go forward again. We have to remember our signed by law is illegal. Um, because you can't regulate content, so the signed by law really needs to be approved by town meeting. But our consultant is doing a few tweaks to it.
Okay, so that'll be coming out soon.
That'll be coming out soon. Um. North Situate. North Situate is what we're, what has been being worked on for over a year is. There's a propos, we're gonna be proposing to add a VCN district with an inner and outer sub-district. The North Situate district is, will be designed for cottage courts, mixed use, live-work buildings, commercial buildings. Excuse me, in the center with ten percent minimum outdoor amenity, amenity space. Then there'll be an outer district with fifteen percent amenity space required. And that will also allow multifamily, um. As in addition to cottages, live-work, mixed use. The idea is to make downtown North Situate, if you can call it that. Be a more vibrant mixed use district, very similar to Green Bush. The buildings in North Situate will generally be allowed to go up to the front property line as they do now. There'll be no specific step back requirements. The density is being proposed is the same as Green Bush. Twelve units by right per forty-three, five sixty, so that's an acre. Twenty-four units by special permit with a density bonus. So Green Bush and North Situate would have the same proposed density. With the harbor being still a denser on top of that. So its uses and building types, the same type of way the, um, VCN and Green Bush is structured. And parking will be required. That's kind of it, the basics in a nutshell for North Situate. It's a, it's a VCN form-based district. Um, MAPC has been the consultant and, um. Where we're working on, um, we're working on it and hope to have a draft. By early January, a final draft by early January. Um, there do, there also needs to be some changes to the bylaw resulting from. Uh, we've been working on two projects in Green Bush. Um, to the VCN district. Um, this consultant feels we need to change the definition of a cottage court. We have to eliminate all references to North Situate in the Village Business Overlay District. We have to take out commercial and multifamily references in HB and GB. Um, as there's only one business, as there's only a business district. The design standards and guidelines that we've been using for the VCN. They're being reorganized a little bit because frankly, they're very confusing. Um, and. Generally, the only thing that is gonna be not allowed to potentially be wavered is the height. Which you don't allow height to be changed anyways. Parking in table two is gonna be changed so that a restaurant is one space per four seats. And we're cleaning up some language. That, um. The parking has to comply with table one or table two. It can't comply with both. There'll be small changes made elsewhere in the zoning bylaw, including changing Board of Selectmen to select board.
How, Karen, how, how? How redlined is this thing gonna look?
Um.
Overwhelmingly?
It's not that bad. I think you're gonna see a lot of redlining in the, um. In the standards and guidelines section because it's, it's being reordered to make more sense. But there'll be, there'll be a fair amount, there will be, there will be a fair amount of redlining.
So we're gonna have a, an article for North Situate and an article for Green Bush?
No, it's, I would, I propose it as one article, as revisions to the zoning bylaw. And mo, and it'll include a, a North Situate VCN district.
We'll have that ready for spring meeting, huh?
Uh, yeah.
When will we get a first look at the redline?
Um, I'm having a conference call with the consultant on Monday. He's going to go back and make, um, a few more changes. We just had, um, we had a meeting with the North Situate Advisory Group. Um. Maybe two weeks ago, they got their final comments in this week. And so, um, the consultant, Chris and I will be talking about them. And so as soon as we get the changes incorporated, you'll get a, you'll get a copy. It'll be definitely before the planning board workshop in January.
Okay.
Um.
Just worried about having too many things on, too many complicated things on the. On, you know, complicated warrants.
I understand what you are saying. Um, and then several of you have expressed your dislike of the, uh, affordable housing section. Of the zoning bylaw or you, you want, you want more projects to, uh, have to do affordable units. Well, the only way to change that is to modify section seven fifty-four of the zoning bylaw. Um, right now, our section seven fifty-four, which was modified when we put in the VCN. Kept the same number of units that the Village Business Overlay District did. So I believe that eight or, if you have seven or fewer units, you don't need affordable units.
Is this an action item in, in the first tranche in the housing?
This is an item on the, on the, uh, Housing Production Plan Strategies. They ask, they put their strategy to include in inclusionary zoning in the entire town. Essentially, you have inclusionary zoning. In most places. Um, the consultant for the Housing Production Plan. Um, I've been going back and forth. I sent you a table, um. If you want to say five or fewer units requires no affordable housing, so that if you have six. Or more units, you have to have affordable housing. Um, you could do that. Um, and you could also say that, um, all housing developments. Over, over, over five units require affordable units. But I don't have a placeholder in for that, so I need to know if you want to do that because the warrant closes on Tuesday.
Um, so I, I'm highly in favor of, of making those changes to the bylaw. However, I, I kind of, I'm interested in hearing what other people think. I don't, I don't wanna jam pack. Too much zoning, uh, to Steve's point too, especially if it's fairly complex, um, into. Uh, into this town meeting, but I think that we should start discussing how we can, uh, update that bylaw, whether it's. We kind of do it fast and try to do it now. I kind of wanna hear what other people have to think, but. I think that making those changes, in my opinion, are, are really important and we should explore how we can, uh. Put some more teeth behind creating affordable housing, uh, through regulatory action as a planning board.
How does anyone else feel? Rebecca?
Well, Karen, I'm sorry, what is it today? More than how many units?
Eight.
It's, it's.
Eight.
Right, seven or fewer units, you do not need affordable housing. So changing it so that you have five or fewer. Requires no affordable housing means six units. If you have six units, it requires affordable housing. This would never apply to residential compound of this, uh, developments because they max out at five. I mean, there, there's a cut, there's a point where a developer isn't gonna want to. Put the affordable units in because they don't, it doesn't make monetary sense. So. That table I sent you suggests that other, some, several other communities put it at six.
Okay, I, I'm good with that. I, I don't know about putting it in now, but I guess if we're gonna change. It's gonna affect North Situate, right?
It would affect, it would affect North Situate.
But it would also affect Green Bush.
Yes, it would.
It would affect the town.
As it should. Well, that's the objective, right, is not to sort of pick and choose locations, right, but.
Right.
Right.
Have a, a general approach to it. Right now, it's eight or more, right? So we're talking about. Um, lowering the bar down to six.
Right.
Is that the only change?
Well, you, and you would basically have to say all housing development over six units requires. Um. Affordable housing.
So one.
Doesn't it already say that, i- if we just?
No, it, it doesn't already say that. Basically, what it says, it says residential cluster. Accessory dwellings, flexible open space. Village Business Overlay District, Humrock Village Residential Overlay District and Village Center Neighborhood District.
Okay, so what are we missing?
You're, you're, you're missing definitive subdivision plans. And the consultant recommended basically saying to all housing developments. To all housing developments.
So in other words, what we're saying here is, um. Curtis Estates with sixteen units would have had to have a couple of affordable houses in it. Is that?
That's correct, but the bylaw basically now already says that because flexible open space. Is included in the bylaw that was changed in two thousand and nineteen.
Wait.
Right now, if a new flexible open space subdivision comes in. That has more than, you know, seven or fewer units. Don't require it, but the eighth one is going to require, so a flexible open space would indeed. Require affordable units.
If that was, Curtis Estates was before that.
Curtis Estates was before that.
I mean, I. I, I think it's a good idea.
Well, I think it's more than a good idea. I absolutely, um. Would back up Ben's statement. I mean, we really need to address affordable housing in a really serious manner.
So can I ask you another question? We, I, I mean, maybe we've already discussed this and you're gonna tell me, Karen, we discussed this. But. Um, will North Situate have a similar? Um. Will we ask people to, you know, put money towards? Um. Making the area better. And in this case, can it go to affordable housing or no?
No, it can't go to affordable housing for the same reason that we discussed last week. The planning board likes control of the money that they ask for mitigation. And we cannot bind the Affordable Housing Trust. They're a separate entity and we can't bind. the Affordable Housing Trust. They're a separate entity, and we can't bind them. That's why you couldn't do it for 18 Ford Place.
Yep.
But, I mean, if, we can do this as a separate zoning article, separate from the North Situate and the other changes, so that if you don't like the way it's going, it can be, um, indefinitely postponed, shall we say.
Okay. I think six is great.
All right, this is just sort of aside, and has to do with housing. Did any of you happen to see in this last Sunday's call about, um, let's get back together, it's about community housing?
Yep, I saw that.
And I think it, it was a well-written article, and I, I think it's something that, that along the same lines of what we're talking about now, really does need to be considered. Um, people living.
It, I, I didn't see this article, so what does that mean?
What it means is, I mean, how many, we, I live in a subdivision. I don't know anybody in the subdivision, and that's what's happening. We, we've spread ourselves out, and now we're trying to do this with, um, and we have it with the Drew Project. There are how many affordable units in that? It's all regular, it's all around transit-oriented housing. It's just, if you can, I'm sure that if you go online, Steve, you could find the article.
What's the gist? That we should eliminate subdivisions and go to?
No, Steve, I did not say that. Don't put words, don't put words in my mouth.
Somebody paraphrase, you know, what, what we would change, right? What, what do you think we should do here?
They talk about co-housing. They talk about, uh, a number of people living in units with shared common space, separate, but they're together. Kamrich has done some of this too.
There's a lot of that in Boston now.
Yeah.
Kind of like a dormitory.
It's, it's more than a dormitory.
I mean, you have a living space and then you eat together type thing.
No, no, you don't eat together, but you have, um, rooms, well, at least in Boston, the people I know that rented, then you have maybe like a rooftop that everybody uses, or rooms that everybody can use. You, you have your own apartment, you have your own place.
And you have shared space.
You have shared space outside your condominium.
Right. And then you all, um, get together to take care of and maintain the property. It's shared. So, and they do it in Europe. Just a thought. All right.
So I will put in another placeholder for the affordable housing. We'll have the signs and North Situate and general changes. Um, frankly, I can't handle any more than that.
That's more than enough.
We don't have a Director of Planning and Development, so.
Yeah, that's a lot.
Who was supposed to be doing a lot of this work. So, um, I, I am just going to say that I do believe we need to get these rat tails addressed.
Yeah, I couldn't agree with you more on that one.
But this would be.
Way to address the rat tails is, um, is to put in a, uh, sort of an area, sort of a ratio calculation for that?
I think so. Um, a lot shape factor.
Yeah.
But that, not for this town meeting.
Nope.
So that's.
I think, I think even once we have could, you know, are, are going to, could generate a lot of, uh, you know, conversation here, so, and, and they're going to be hard to follow. I actually think the affordable housing one won't be that hard because it's, you're changing sort of one page, right?
Right, it's essentially one page, and the signs is not a very, it's not a lengthy bylaw either. Um.
Yeah, but it's a, it's sort of this, it creates, um, kind of this freedom of speech discussion back and forth, so it tends to take a lot of time.
Right. So that's all I had on the zoning articles. Typically, what you've done in the past is you have a zoning workshop in January. I'm going to schedule, the first public hearing for zoning is going to be February 11th to allow for a continuance later in February, and then, um, the advisory board does its final vote, um, in early March, and right now, the projected date of town meeting would be April 12th. So it's quite an aggressive, um, timeframe.
Also too, uh, we're going to start, um, meeting at 6:30 rather than 7 o'clock, so that, uh, we can get this stuff done before the hour gets too late in the course of an evening.
Okay.
I would say that's okay.
Or after, oh, after the new year?
Right, after the new year, because this will be, this is your last meeting, um, until January 14th.
Right. I think for the first, you know, first half of the year, that's probably okay, once, um, if, if, if we all get back to work, well, particularly, I'm, I'm just speaking for myself, um, then 6:30 becomes a problem.
Well, we'll cross that bridge when we get there.
Right, I'm just saying. I, I don't want it to be permanent thing.
Nothing in this world is permanent, Steve.
Well, I put my stake in the ground for that one.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, anybody else? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Ms. Barbine?
Hi.
Ms. Lampert?
Hi.
Ms. Lewis?
Hi.
Mr. Bornstein?
Hi.
Mr. Pritchard?
Hi.
Thank you, unanimous, all in favor.
Good night all.
Happy holidays, everyone. We won't see you till after the new year.
Merry Christmas.
Happy holidays.
Rebecca, Rebecca and Steve, I just, at some point, need your signatures on 18 Ford Place, so if you can reach out to me about arrangements to do that, that would be great.